They say the pendulum swings one way and then it starts swinging. It is, it's very different, it's very different. Sense, yeah, well, question. Yeah, question. Yeah, we're in very different times. Very different, very different times. I've been all over the world, I mean, someone who's got a must-own budget. We're just in.
I'd like to call to order the October 23rd, 2023 business meeting of the Ravenna School District Board of Education. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Calhoun?
Here.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Here.
Mrs. Dennison?
Here.
Mrs. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Tantimonio?
And I'd also like to take this time to introduce our student board members of the month. We have Addison Riblin from Ravenna High School and Charlie Uyger from Brown Middle School. If we could rise for the pledge of allegiance. We could have a moment of silence. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
There are none.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tantimonio?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes. We do have a person signed up to speak on agenda items this evening. Latisha Dukes. And she will be speaking on basketball coach.
I was just, uh, I'm Latisha Dukes, hi. I was just wondering how our basketball coaches, like, is the application put out there for everybody? Because I go through this agenda every week I come and I see people's names that are family members of people who have jobs here. So I see the eighth grade, seventh, eighth grade basketball coaches are Lynn Kelly and Terry Callahan. So my question is, how are the coaches picked? Where is it advertised at?
So we will get that information and then follow up with you. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the game changer awards.
Dr. Hebert is at a conference out of town this evening, so I will have the honor of reading our game changer awards for October. The first game changer is a staff member. Oh, we have our, our board members go up on stage.
And then if we could have the principals and the board member, our game changers line up too.
Yes, students line up with your principals. And staff members line up first. Okay, our first staff game changer is Jody, Jody Cornbaugh, our secretary at Brown Middle School. Jody is the glue that keeps Brown Middle School together. She works so hard and is always so busy, but she's always pleasant and helpful. She's like a duck, calm and cool above the surface, but paddling like crazy under the surface. Jody is the first contact that staff, students, and guests have at Brown Middle School. And she makes sure that it's a positive experience. Jody treats everyone as a valued member of our school family with a calm and patient demeanor. Jody is truly a master of all trades. There's rarely a question that she does not know the answer to, or at least knows where to find it. Jody shows love to her students and staff by bringing treats on our long conference nights. And her candy dish is a popular spot with students and staff. Jody has almost single-handedly run the Brown Middle School yard sale for years, earning money for student programming and prizes. She also serves as the advisor to the Brown Yearbook Club. Lack of staffing has recently necessitated Jody to fly solo in the Brown Middle School office, and she hasn't missed a beat. She is a true game changer in our district. Our next staff game changer is Brian Duncan, the assistant principal at Ravenna High School. Brian Duncan invests so much into Ravenna High School. He is the first in the building each morning sending out emails to staff while we are all still pouring our coffee and driving to work. He has spent countless hours sitting with seniors who are off track to graduate, helping them complete their credits and earn their diploma. He spends money out of his own pocket to reward students with whatever food they want if they meet a goal they've made with him. We're talking Chipotle, Canes, Five Guys, the good stuff. Students that he sees for discipline often walk away saying they got, quote, "dad talk" from Duncan. These are the same students he's buying lunch for when they complete courses or attend school. Most of all, we can always depend on him. Brian Duncan always steps up, steps in, and takes care of his building and his people without question or complaint. Brian works behind the scenes to ensure that teachers are able to focus on the classroom. It's a thankless job. Thank you, Brian. And our third staff game changer is Julia Sturba, the vocal music director at Ravenna High School and Brown Middle School. Mrs. Sturba presented a lovely fall concert that featured both Brown and high school students after only having them in class for seven weeks. No student could have left that performance without feeling as if he or she were a part of something special. Mrs. Sturba is inclusive, encouraging, exceptional, and twice exceptional students to participate in the vocal music program. She conducted each ensemble as if they were performing in Severance Hall. As a parent of two Ravenna students who participate in choir as well as a colleague, I believe that Julia Sturba could be considered a game changer in the Ravenna School District. Thank you. And now our student game changer, starting at our preschool, Tyson Allison. Tyson has grown so much during his time at preschool. He has become a leader in the classroom and demonstrates school rules to others. We are so proud of him. Our game changer at West Park is Jayden Doucet. Jayden comes to school every day with a big smile on his face. He has a great attitude. He's helpful to his classmates. He is a good friend to others. Jayden follows the Ravenna way and encourages others to do so as well. He is a hard worker and is achieving great success. His teacher, Mr. Cole Quebec, is so proud of him. He's respectful, responsible, and in control all the time. Congratulations, Jayden. At Willard, our game changer is second grader, Dastin Horner. Dastin has a very kind heart. He's always the first student to lend a helping hand. Dastin makes sure everyone in the classroom feels included and important. We are lucky to have him at Willard. At West Main, our game changer is Quinn Andrews in the third grade, nominated by Mrs. Shea and Mrs. Gibson. She is the epitome of what make, what it means to be respectful, responsible, and in control. She is kind to everyone, students and teachers alike. She is always willing to help others. Quinn comes to school ready to learn every day, and she always does her best. She goes above and beyond in all of her classes. Quinn leads by example, and she is a role model for all students. Our game changer at Brown Middle School is Arlen Morris. Arlen is a fifth grader at Brown Middle School. Arlen was nominated by his math teacher. She has this to say about Arlen. Arlen is a hardworking, dedicated student who is such a pleasure to have in math class. She stays with a problem until she's figured it out. She's also willing to help anyone that needs help. Arlen is a great role model, and I am honored to have her in my class. Arlen is a true example of what it means to be respectful, responsible, and in control. And finally, our Ravenna High School game changer is Xavier Boyle in the 12th grade. Xavier is a current senior at Ravenna High School and is doing an exceptional job focusing on his goal of graduation. This year, he has only missed a total of three full days, while last year, he only attended 13 full days. At the beginning of this year, he started with three credits, and in the last two months, Xavier has completed a total of nine credits through Acelis. It's the most the nominator has ever seen. He is up to a total of 12 credits and counting. Each time I see Xavier in the building, he has a huge smile and a sense of pride surrounding him. I am incredibly proud of Xavier and cannot wait to see him walk across the stra- stage at graduation in May. And this is from another former game changer, Mrs. D'Onofrio. Thank you. We take a brief recess now, and we'll go out in the cafeteria and take some photos of all of our game changers.
Okay.
So now we'll resume the business meeting if we can have the treasurer's update.
Thank you. First, I want to start out tonight's update with a few just agenda items and then I'll move into my five-year forecast. The fiscal year 2023 financial audit is in progress and our state auditors have been on-site at the district a few days already and they're continuing that work probably for the next month or so. Last week, we completed a property appraisal inspections on October 17th. It was last Tuesday. It was a cold rainy day. It was part of our Ohio School Plan Property Insurance Coverage. They require this inspection about every five years and Stephen York and I escorted the inspector from Kroll to eight of our instructional facilities to discuss the building upgrades and changes and that allowed her to take some insurance photos of the front and back of our buildings. Also, to let you know that the Superintendent's Advisory Committee for Budgets met on Tuesday evening as well to begin a participatory budgeting process. We discussed our fiscal '24 budget, aligning our resources with our district's strategic plan and getting the community involved in that participatory budgeting process for budget planning for the fiscal '25 budget. There were two board meetings, two board members at that meeting as well. Next, just an announcement that our employee benefits open enrollment begins on November 1st and as you will see on the agenda this evening, board members are able to opt into the district's benefits plan. So each board member was provided with a chart of our benefit coverage costs if you are interested in that or if you have any questions. The Board Finance Committee will meet this Wednesday on October 25th at 3:00 to talk about federal and state grant funds and cash flow. And that's all I have for a quick department update this evening. But next, I want to talk about the five-year forecast that's on the board's agenda tonight. The board's recommendation, tonight for the board's recommendation is the district's five-year forecast. And this forecast includes the fiscal 2024 budget, our current fiscal year, plus the next four fiscal years, ending with fiscal 2028. This presentation will highlight some of the key indicators and assumptions included in this forecast. With the board's approval tonight, this forecast will be submitted to the Ohio Department of Education prior to the November 30th deadline. In addition, the law allows a district to submit an update to the five-year forecast at any time. So if our levy is approved on November 7th, then our finance committee may want to consider submitting an optional update to include that new revenue. That forecast may be reviewed and approved by the board at our next board meeting, which would be in December. First, I always like to point out why we do a five-year forecast each fall. This is our opportunity to engage the district's school board and the community in the long-range planning and discussions of the financial issues facing the district. It serves as a basis for determining the district's ability to enter into contracts, including employment contracts and collective bargaining agreements. And it provides a method for the Ohio Department of Education and the Auditor of State to identify school districts with potential financial problems. This is a summary of the five-year forecast. As we've discussed with previous forecasts, deficit spending takes from the district's already small cash balance. This year, I predict that our revenues and expenditures will be about equal. The small negative that you see in the forecast for fiscal '24 would occur if revenues are received at the worst-case scenario level, which is the conservative approach we take in the forecast, and expenditures are our entire fiscal '24 budget. Next year, if we do not take any action to make adjustments, we will exhaust the entire cash balance. The next slide shows that this is, that summary chart on a graph. So it looks like our revenues remain flat, our expenditures continue to increase due to inflation, and our cash balance falls below zero by the end of fiscal '26. Next, we talk about the cash balance as part of cash balance in true cash days in the forecast. And this chart shows us that cash balance is a key indicator in the five-year forecast. So for example, if a cash balance is too high consistently, the district may not be providing needed services to students. The professional standard for a healthy cash balance is 60 days or two months, and that allows for fluctuations in cash flow. So again, for example, the district receives property taxes twice a year, but we pay our expenses. For example, we make payroll twice a month, so our money doesn't necessarily come in in the same pattern than it goes out. Our cash balance expressed in true cash days takes the district's total expenditures and divides them by 365 days, then divides that into the cash balance. For fiscal '24, that means taking the estimated $28.8 million in estimated expenses and dividing it by 365 to get $79,145 a day and then dividing that into the unreserved cash balance of $1.08 million. That leaves us just 14 days or about two weeks of cash on hand. That number changes, though, consistently as we make these forecasts. In fiscal '23, we were forecast to be at 20 days last year and we ended at 10. This year, the forecast for '24, last year, we forecasted 19 days of cash on hand, but this year, we've revised that to 14. But fiscal '25 continues to be that turning point, so that's the point where we will have exhausted our cash balance and we will have zero cash on hand. The next chart shows you the revenue for fiscal 2024. You've seen this graph before and it's only changed slightly this year. With an increase in our state foundation aid, that piece of the pie has gotten about 2% bigger. So our state sources are about 58% of our revenues and our local sources are 42%. Ravenna Schools gets more revenue from the state than we do from local taxes. So I start with a discussion on our state revenue. Ohio uses a formula now called the Fair School Funding Plan. It produces unrestricted and restricted revenue in several defined categories listed on this chart. The Ohio Department of Education provides simulations for each district to determine how much revenue we're going to receive. And this forecast uses those simulations for fiscal '25, fiscal '24, and '25. That's what the state provides, lines up with their biennial budget. The additional three years of the forecast depend on assumptions made for variables such as enrollment, economic strength of the state, and what level the formula will be funded at each year. Enrollment is the primary variable to the state funding formula, and this slide shows our enrollment trends by grade level. I got this information from our EMIS data. That's the Education Management Information System that allows us to report district data to the state of Ohio. When you talk to our principals, though, you hear a little bit different story about enrollment. So more students are enrolling in kindergarten this year, for example, enrollment's up at Brown Middle School. So as a result of those conversations and looking at our trends from our EMIS data, this forecast predicts a stable enrollment going forward. Our local property taxes are the other major revenue source, and this chart highlights the last time that the district received new operating funds from property taxes. The 2005 current expense levy began collecting in 2006. As property values go up, our effective mileage goes down on voted levies, and this means that the district collects roughly the same amount of money as we did in 2006 from that last levy. The other half of the forecast looks at our $28 million in expenditures, beginning with fiscal '24. So, you know, I always say, "We are a people organization." I had the honor of attending the Ravenna Rotary Club this afternoon and our speaker was our principal at Willier, JT Housier. And JT did a wonderful job of describing the staff in his building and talking about how it's such a diverse group of educators that work with our students and how it's not just a teacher in a classroom. It's everybody in the building that makes up that family. It's our custodial staff, it's our cafeteria staff, it's our office staff, and it just highlighting the fact that we are a people organization. So you see that on this chart as well. 82% of our general fund is spent on salary and benefits for our people. So I wanted to take a closer look at that and highlight a couple of things. With declining enrollment in the past three years, the district eliminated 14.5 positions going into fiscal 2024. That resulted in some savings, but also consider that those positions were some of our newest staff and the positions eliminated were at the lower end of the pay scale. The estimated savings of those 14.5 FTEs was $635,250 in salary savings in fiscal '24. The employee separation plan, the severance plan that we offered, replaced five retirees' salaries that were at the higher end of our staffing scale with newer staff, many of whom were part of that reduction in force. So it allowed us to bring back some of those new educators to the, who were already at our district. And again, we worked with Educators Preferred Corporation on that and they provided some estimated savings in the first year of $263,335 in salary costs for fiscal 2024. But finally, I also highlight the medical and dental coverage premium increases that we received this year through our cooperative, the Stark County Council of Governments. The medical and prescription drug coverage increased 7.98% in fiscal '24 and the dental coverage increased 5.75 in fiscal '24. We also are taking one premium holiday this year, which means there's one month when the district and the employees are not required to pay the premiums. In the past, in an ideal world, we had two premium holidays. But as a result of increased costs of providing medical services, largely as a result of the COVID pandemic, we're down to one premium holiday. And just to put that in perspective, it's about $425,000 a year. That would be the district's 85% of the premiums. Next, just to highlight some of the primary assumptions that are included in this forecast. So a forecast is based on assumptions and when the actual numbers vary from the forecast, it's important to look back at the assumptions used and see what changed. So for revenue, looking at the Fair School Funding Plan, the assumptions are that we have a stable enrollment and a good economic outlook in the state of Ohio. So the state continues to include funding for the formula in their biennial budget. Property taxes, we use a conservative valuation, increases and we have to include the impact of House Bill 920 on Class 1 and Class 2 properties. So as we like to say with House Bill 920, it, again, as your property values increase, the mileage decreases to keep the collection amount consistent. We also have a 97% collection rate currently, and that seemed to be a trend over time, so I continued that assumption going forward. The district currently collects some rental income, but that's based on leases that may or may not be renegotiated. And we also received some prior fiscal year refunds. I highlighted in May that the Ohio Department of Medicaid had changed their claims processing system and they were a little bit behind in giving us our settlement for fiscal 2021. We should have received that in June, which would have fallen in last fiscal year. Instead, we received it in this fiscal year in July. But this forecast assumes that that will be the new payment schedule so that we will continue to receive one settlement award each year, not two in fiscal '24. Expenditures, same type of process with assumptions. So we include the savings from the reduction in force in the employee separation plan. We also determine what our increases will be each year in salaries based on our collective bargaining agreements. Those are approved through fiscal 2025, so we know what those step-in base cost increases will be, at least for this and next fiscal year. Going forward, we have to make some assumptions and it's always conservative to include the same, the same base cost increase in the out-years after the collective bargaining agreement expires, just for a placeholder. The purchase service costs increase, and I listed some of those so that you would see examples of things that are impacted by inflation. So special education service contracts, utility costs, building maintenance contracts, legal fees, property insurance, mileage reimbursements, postage, internet service. So all of those are contracts that the district pays each year out of a purchase service account and they're all subject to inflation and continue to increase. And then finally, the assumption that capital costs will continue to be supported from permanent improvement funds. So you don't see a lot of capital costs coming out of our general funds and therefore not a lot in our forecast. So finally, to leave you with some key takeaways. These probably look very familiar, the transparency in reporting this. House Bill 33 is our state budget bill and the state funding formula and the impacts that has on our funding. The impact of federal ESAR funds that are wrapping up, so we are not receiving any new funds. We simply have a carryover from previous years. We continue to deficit spend and that impacts the remaining cash balance in our general fund. But finally, I added the impact of new local revenues as a key takeaway because I believe it's so important to provide this district financial data in order for people to understand where their support goes and why it matters. So the next slide is the impact of local revenues. This revised forecast summary that you've seen earlier shows the impact each year of the new revenue generated by a 6.9 mil levy. Excuse me. It begins with a half a collection in this fiscal year and continues with a full collection going forward. It brings our cash balance up to closer to the 60-day recommended level at fiscal year-end, beginning in fiscal 2025. So thank you for the opportunity to present this information to you, and if you have any questions, this will be in the treasurer's reports. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I just have one and at the risk of sounding like a broken record, our enrollment continues to trend down. We really have to drill down and take a look at why people are leaving and how we can keep them. We had a big year this year in preschool, but if we are not doing what we need to to retain them as they cycle through the grade levels, we are going to continue to see the decline. So I just hope that we do not lose sight of that. That is a real, real problem and something that we need to continue to address.
If we could have reports of the boards, starting with the Maplewood Report from Mrs. Seaman?
We approved, at the Maplewood Board Meeting, we approved the five-year forecast, as we will do here tonight, and we also approved a five-year contract for the superintendent and for the treasurer. We discussed several different things about during our student achievement discussion and we talked about the value of quizzes and how important having quizzes in the classroom is, both to take away the stress of a big test at the end and the research has shown that, actually, it's decades of research that have shown that taking these tests, these quizzes or practice tests actually improve a person's learning and that the brain needs to look at these different, the different things that they've learned over time and put that stress on the brain, not the kids, but the brain, and it helps to improve their retention. We also discussed a four-day school week, not that we would actually do that, but just the discussion of whether it's a good thing or not. And we talked about the amount of homework necessary for children and we found that research is showing that elementary students really shouldn't have any more than 10 minutes of homework. Middle school kids shouldn't have more than an hour and high school students shouldn't have more than an hour and a half to two and a half hours. The last thing we talked about in our student achievement discussion was AI and we talked about tools that would help teachers improve their teaching, especially in asking questions and follow-up questions. And there are several tools out there that would just be for the teacher to use and would help her or him go over all of their questions, whether they were successful or not. Christmas in the Woods is Friday, November 3rd from 5 to 10, or 5 to 9, and Saturday, November 4th from 10 to 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Seaman. Any questions? If we could have the Ravenna Parks and Recreation Report from Mrs. Dennison?
Thank you. Just as a reminder, the registration is still open for the 2023 Halloween drive-through trick-or-treat that's going to be at City Park this Saturday from 10 to 12. So if you're interested or have kids that want to participate, you need to go on the website and register for that. Also, there are several programs that are going on through recreation. One is a kids gymnastic program will be starting on October 26th. There's also Fortage Youth Archery Club that's going to be starting here on Mondays, a youth dance class at Tower Lodge beginning October 24th. Also, they're having basketball clinics for grades K through third and also a youth basketball league that's going to be beginning in November. So a lot of activities, if you're looking for something for your young people to be involved in, just visit the recreation website and you can register and sign up for the various programs. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Dennison. If we could move on to reports of the treasurer?
Thank you. The financial items for approval this evening are on a consent agenda of items 1 through 5, but I'll need to take a roll at number 5. Item number 1 is the approval of the minutes from the September business meeting. Item number 2 are some donation checks received for the Brown Middle School scoreboard. Item number 3 are the monthly financial reports, including the bank reconciliation for September, the financial cash summary report for September, the checklist, and the budget status report. Number 4 is an approval of a transfer from the Fund 22 into the Athletics Fund. That's to close out that program in Fund 22. And then finally, the authorization for the district's treasurer to offer insurance to Board of Education members per Ohio Revised Code 3313.202. I just need to call a roll. Mrs. Calhoun?
No.
Mrs. Dennison?
No.
Mrs. Seaman?
No.
Mr. Tantimonia?
No.
Mr. Wizniewski?
No.
Okay, so the motion is to be made on items 1 through 5.
Can we have a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Any questions or discussion?
In number 4, what's the MAC transferred into athletics?
I believe that was Athletic Conference Championship. Yeah, when we hold championship games at the district, we collect funds then are responsible for paying the expenses for it. Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tantimonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Item number 6 is the five-year forecast that we just discussed.
Can we have a motion to approve item 6?
Still moved.
Second?
I heard Mr. Tantimonia and Mrs. Seaman with the second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Tantimonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Can we have reports and recommendations of the superintendent and other administrators?
Yes, the business items are 1 through 4 on a consent agenda. Item number 1 is a contract agreement with LearnWell for Student Services, as well as wings of change therapy, again, specific services for our students. Item number 3 is a resolution, just to update our board policies to keep them in line with House Bill 33, and that involves the name change for the Ohio Department of Education. Item number 4 is the Reed Memorial Library trustee appointment for January 2023. Item number 4 is the Reed Memorial Library trustee appointment for January 2024 through December 31st of 2030.
Can I have a motion to approve business recommendations A1 through 4?
So moved.
I heard Mr. Wizniewski.
Mrs. Dennison.
Mrs. Dennison on the second, okay.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tantimonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Under personnel considerations this evening, the consent agenda is items A, 1 through 4. The B, C, B and C each only have one item underneath. That'll be one consent agenda. Under certificated staff, we have a retirement resignation effective on the last day of school for an intervention specialist at Brown Middle School. We have a correction to a three-year contract for an employee who was previously approved for a continuing contract. So we need to make that correction. We have a list of substitutes and we have a, a recommendation for a substitute to be hired to teach one period of social studies per day at the high school beginning October 23rd. Under supplementals, we have a list of coaches and the sports that they'll be coaching and a list of volunteers who are also supporting those athletic programs.
Can we have a motion to approve personnel considerate, considerations?
A, B, and C.
A, B, and C. So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tantimonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Next, we have classified personnel actions. Items 1 through 5 are on a consent agenda. That includes a resignation of a food handler and then the replacement of that food handler. And then an additional food handler position has been filled at Ravenna High School and at Brown Middle School. And then a substitute food handler prior to her employment offer.
Can we have a motion to approve items D1 through 5?
Still moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Mr. Tantimonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
The next consent agenda item includes personnel items 6 through 13. We have the employment of an educational aide for one-on-one services with, with a student at Ravenna High School. We have an unpaid leave of absence for an educational aide at West Maine and another at Brown Middle School. We have an employment of a secretary at Brown Middle School. Hopefully that'll help out Mrs. Cornball. We have a bus mechanic. We have two onboard instructor contracts. And then again, recommendations for employment for a substitute bus aide effective September 5th through August 22nd, uh, change, I'm sorry, changing the effective date of September 5th to August 22nd. So that's correcting our records on our agendas. And then again, some employment actions for substitutes in our transportation department.
Can we have a motion to approve items 6 through 13?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Tantimonia?
Yes.
Mrs. With, Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you. Getting tongue-tied with all of the agenda items this evening. That concludes the consent agenda items under personnel this evening.
So now we'll move on to recognition of the public on non-agenda items. We asked if you could limit your comments to no more than three minutes each. The first speaker that we have to, signed up to speak is William Calhoun, who will be speaking on the GPA.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hi.
So I was excited when I found out that we were going to be raising or had a plan in place to raise the GPA up. But I also didn't get too happy because I didn't figure that like we was going to carry this out all the way through. So now that's where I'm at with it now. Because seems like we did start off good. I don't know what happened, but we haven't revisited that or there hasn't been movement. And it just seems like the things that we, we should be focusing on a little bit more that really could help the kids out and hold them accountable, we just kind of go away from them things sometimes. I don't know, maybe you have done and I just don't know. And the community don't know because as I sit and speak with some of them on Saturday mornings during breakfast, because we have a men's group and I would like for them to stand up so you can see the people who we eat breakfast on Saturdays and what we talk about. So this GPA requirement is one of the things we just discussed. So moving forward, you know, I would like to see if that's a plan that was put in place to happen, that it happens. Or if we're not going to do it, then say we're not doing it, but just not carrying it out or doing nothing else about it again, that's, that's just kind of like not doing it. You know what I mean? So I would like to see some accountability for that. Like I would like to see that put in place because I think it could help out our kids. And we want to be more proactive for the kids and the community. So we're going to start trying to show up at these meetings and ask questions moving forward. Because there is a couple of people in the community that do show up all the time. So I think we need more people showing up. That way somebody can be held accountable because, you know, I've had a couple of kids come to me after they graduate crying saying they don't know what they're going to do and they don't feel like they could get any help. And no one prepared them and all these type of things. They're not coming here telling you this, but this is what they run around the community telling everybody. So moving forward, we do want to try to do things to help get this going in the right way. And my question about the GPA when it's answered, you can respond to me like the paper said behind closed doors or whatever, but I would like to, for you to answer my question at the next board meeting or in front of everybody who, because this is everybody's question. It's not just mine. So, and, and another thing is this agenda and non-agenda questions, well, you make people feel like, because their question ain't on the agenda, that it isn't as important and it's kind of put at the end of the meeting for you to say whatever you guys say or ask whatever question you want to ask. If we're asking questions, why don't we ask them all at one time? I mean, if you're doing your jobs, there's nothing to hide.
Sure.
You know what I mean? So moving forward, when y'all answer my question, I would like it to be answered so these people can hear the answer to the question too and, and not just me tell them what was said to me. So, and I'm finishing up on that and I got one last thing. Katrina, I hear she's been doing a great job.
Good job.
That's the principle. So I do want to thank her and her to keep doing what she's doing because I've heard positive things about her. So thanks for letting me speak and hopefully I'll get my answer.
Thank you. Next, if we could have Trey Longmire speak on football.
Hey.
Hey.
All right, I'm back, guys. And I'm going to keep coming back because my kid goes to school here, I went to school here, everybody's went to school here. This is what I'm going to talk about. I stood here two years ago and everybody's pretty much the same. I don't see no new faces. Hi, girls. And we talked about this. I came here, I told the board, and I have the paper to prove it, who I, I told them who the coach was going to be. I got a letter back from our superintendent basically telling me that we were going to go through this farce and this fake process when I explained to you guys and to her that I knew who the coach was. Moving forward, two years later, we're in the same position. We have gotten rid of coaches for less. We have had two seasons of 3 and 7. We have not pushed these kids to do anything different. I, there's people who don't have the means that I have. I had the means to get my child out of here, but he chose to come back. He chose to come back. But listen, there's people who are stuck here. I said every Friday, rain, sleet, whatever. I am sure Mr. Joe Callahan is an awesome teacher, but we got to let these teachers teach and get some coaches in here that are going to coach. Everybody is leaving. Everybody's leaving. Our enrollment will continue to go down. We have children who have played in our district their whole entire life who will not play for this coach. What are we going to do about it? That what are we going to do about it? I will do everything. I will get a petition. I will go to the newspaper. We have to do something. We have gotten rid of coaches with Russ DA. He had a winning record and they got rid of him. We're going to do something. My kid goes here and I'm going to keep coming back and we're going to keep doing things. We're, we have to do something. You guys are the board. You have to do something. I can't come here every month and be made to think that I'm crazy when I live in this community. You guys want a levy pass, well, we better get some stuff done because right now nobody in this community is voting for this levy. People want salaries you want paid, do your job. I am tired of it. We don't have a winning program besides bowling and baseball. We got to do better. This is not the Ravenna way. I'm 42 years old. I've been here my whole entire life. I have cousins and family. Look at all these people who are on the wall outside who has, has to see these programs. These programs just go down. Everybody in here has their name on a plaque outside. This is not the Ravenna way. And for a coach to allow a child to take something from a child, this hurt me and it should hurt all of you. I started that game at Springfield when LB could have broke that record. This is a coach that y'all picked that took something from this, you, that he took something from this child. He took a record from this child. So his name could be out there, it's going to still be out there, but it would have, it should have been up there. We have to do better. This is not the Ravenna I know and I'm going to keep coming back. And if you guys don't feel the same way I feel, then maybe you guys should get up and let some people get in here that feel the way I feel.
So next, if we could have Wes Fransom, who will be speaking on responses.
Good afternoon. Really quickly, just, just to, to put it, put it out there, I get off work every day at 6:00 p.m. And the school board meetings, none of them start after 6:00 p.m. So what that means is I have to take vacation time to attend school board meetings every month. So that being said, if I'm taking the time to take vacation time to come to attend a school board meeting because what's happening in this district is important to me, not just because I have children that attend this district, but I know a whole lot of people who have children who attend this district. But it is important and I think at the very least, common courtesy, and I know it's, it's not your policy yet, but I'm hoping that this will change or start the, the ball rolling to get this process changed. I know our superintendent's office hours. I know her telephone number. I know her email address. And if I had a question for her, I know how to contact her to get a response from her. But I take time out of my workday, away from my family, away from my children to come here to ask questions and to address the Ravenna City School Board about certain issues. But my problem is, is I have never gotten a response from the Ravenna City School Board. My responses always come from the superintendent, which I know is your policy, but it is a policy that has to change. I did not vote for Dr. Hebert or any of the other superintendents that we've had to be on the school board or to be accountable for the district. That's you all. And at the very least, it is common courtesy as a public servant for you to respond to the questions that are asked to you. Again, I know it is a policy now, but that policy needs to change because at the end of the day, you're going to want for people to go to the ballot box and vote for you to govern the school board. Be accountable to the people that you want to vote for you and respond to them when they ask you a question. Just like Mr. Calhoun said, make it public. Make it public. We get the phone calls, we get the rhetoric, we get the cliche, we get the this is going to work, go this way or that's going to go that way. But I have yet to hear a response from the school board that I elected and that I addressed. Please, let's put the ball in motion to get that changed. That's only respect.
Thank you. Next, we have William Tarver, who will be speaking on sports and the GPA.
Will spoke grandly about it. I don't think I need to speak on it.
Okay.
I'll take his part. Yeah. I'll donate my time as soon as I can.
And this is Samantha.
Bound, yes. My concern actually has to do with West Park, I mean, sorry, West Maine. The traffic there, you have traffic at both sides. Diamond, all up Spruce, King Street, all up Spruce. All four stop signs are completely crowded at all points in time. I know the preschool had implemented something where all traffic comes down Summit. I, I think that West Park, I mean, West Maine needs to do something similar. It's, it's dangerous, especially with the traffic coming down Diamond and even going to Williard. And sometimes it takes you 20 minutes going to Williard because it's so unsafe trying to get down Diamond. Due to the, the traffic is backed up from 59 all the way the other side Diamond, coming down Spruce, like every corner, there's no way to get through. And you have to get down Diamond for most people, depending on where you live at, but majority of people have to get down Diamond in order to get to Williard. So it causes you to be late going to other schools. And honestly, last year there was an accident there. It may have been the year before, but it is very dangerous. There's probably 20 cars. People go through, stop on the opposite side as it's just very dangerous. So that's my only concern.
Thank you. Samantha, yes. So the final speaker that we have on non-agenda items is Jason Mack, who will be speaking on Parents Portal.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have dealt with the school board on many superintendents, going back to Mr. Warner, Mr. Coffey and others. I have dealt with a lot of members of the school board, Debbie Davidson, Ms. Newhouse and many, many more, Roger Bolt and others, who was kind of more friend, um, society-friendly, that you could go up to them and talk to them about issues and they give you honest answers. They was approachable. If you're not approachable, how can we get anything accomplished? You could say, yeah, 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 then go on in your way, but we don't got no answers. Okay? We're dealing with a lot of single-parent families in society. Okay? That mean a single-parent family, the mother is in charge. She got to say so. But what about the father who want to be involved in their kid's education life? If the parent, the primary parent, if she don't say yay and put the, the father on paperwork, he can't do nothing. He can't even have a, a, a opinion on his daughter that he's paying child support over because the primary parent might not be enthused about education. But the father is very enthused about education, but he has no say so. Those fathers have been up to the school system several times, but guess what? They get turned around because their name ain't on the paperwork. But they could pay child support, but they can't go up there and say about their kid's education. There's a problem there. There's a problem there. We're failing majorly in education. We're failing in society because we have no more nuclear families where there's a mother and a father. That's limited. We are dealing with single-parent families. Mostly, the parent is the primary. Not all fathers want to be involved in their kid's life, but the ones that do want to be involved, you must make it accessible to them. You must. If the mother of the parent was the primary, don't have a good relationship with the father, she's not going to put his name on no paperwork for him to go ask about his child. He, she's not going to give him the portal number to get into, to check on his kids' grades and see what's they doing. They turning their homework? Do they got a, a test coming up? If you, if you got assignment due the day after? We, the, the father knows nothing. Unless he, if he don't have a good relationship with the, with the Unless he, if he don't have a good relationship with the, with the mother. And nine times out of ten, they don't have good relationships. So, that father who wanna be a part of his child's education life is being left out because he can't get his name on paperwork that's feasible, that is put forth to file a protocol. The protocol must change somehow for parents who wanna be involved in their kid's life. Somehow, if he's paying child support, he should be able to bring paperwork up there showing that he's paying some child support and he's present and he's not behind. Something should be given to the, the man that he be able to go check on his kid. Because most of the time, the parent who is involved is not involved. The parent who has to say so, not involved. Now what? We going to pass this kid along every grade? With grades that's not acceptable? Who wanna see their kid make, have C.D.s and F.s? That's not acceptable. It shouldn't be acceptable. But the primary parent don't care about education, it's gonna be acceptable. And how are we passing these kids on? How? I can tell you five kids that graduated can't even do edu, addition subtraction. Are you kidding me? And the writing is hideous. But now, they don't even have to write no more. I taught my grandchild cursive. She went and wrote her name in cursive, she got in trouble. They don't do cursive no more. We're dumbing our kids down to a point, they ain't gonna never be able to go to college. How can they go to college if they dumbed down to the point? They can't even, even, the mission to get in the co, they, they, they didn't, some kids don't even not put their name on it, o, 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 on a paper. Let's be for real.
I can extend.
When I was in school, I had people that cared. Teachers cared. We got kids teaching kids now. I had Ms. Sissman, the one you trying to hire back. I had him as my social studies teacher. He's a good teacher, but he's been tired. He was tired when we was in school. He used to grab his hair, and he, he used to tell us, "Look, I'm bored because of you guys." But we gotta bring him back to, get somebody that care. It gotta stop. We must care about the kid's education. We must. I went to school at Ohio State. Ms. Simon, C.C. Simon, Judge Carrson, all, everybody. Eight people went to school together. If you ever been to Ohio State, it's a oval. It's a bunch of sidewalks that come together. Destiny had all of us on different sidewalks. We all met at one place. And the first thing we all said was, "Ravenna ain't taught us nothing. Man, we struggling." Everybody was struggling, but guess what? Every last one of us graduated. But every last one of us struggling. And all of us in college prep classes in hi, high school, but we wasn't being taught the things that take us to the next level in life. We are dumbing our kids down to the point, they can't even get a job at McDonald's. If they do go to college, they gotta take remedial classes before they get into their regular classes. Now, instead of four and a half years, they could be in school for five and a half years. But we could do anything. The fathers that care, give them an opportunity to be present in their kid's life. We need that. If, if you wanna see grades come up, GPAs come up, it's gonna take two parents to let that happen. Find a way to get these fathers who wanna be a part of these kids' lives, a, a avenue to go down to be a part of these kids' life. I appreciate you listening to me. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thank you. And I just wanna thank everyone who came out and spoke tonight. Um, I can say that in the time that I've been on the board, this is the best public participation that we've had. The topics were timely, they were needed. All of you taking your time, taking your time from work to come here, I wanna thank you. And, you know, I did my homework, and yes, there were people who spoke longer than three minutes, but under our board policy, as the presiding officer, I have the authority to extend time, and what you were saying means so much that that needed to be done. Um, so, thank you. I wrote down notes. You are going to get your responses, and I agree. The responses should be done publicly, because that's what you come for. So, just thank you. Keep coming, keep showing up, keep speaking up. It's appreciated. Um, now, if we could move on just to discussion with our student board members of the month. This month, we have Addison Rieblin and Charlie Uyger, um, from the high school and middle school. If we could start just by each of you, and we'll start with Addison, just telling the board what you would like for us to know about you.
Hi, my name's Addison. I am in cross-country and track and band. I think that the participation in all three is pretty bad, especially band. Um, that was, that is all.
Hey, my name's Charlie. Um, I do volleyball, archery, and band and choir. I agree with Addison that, uh, the participation in sports, especially in volleyball and band, they are going dramatically down. That's all.
Thank you so much. So, as student board members of the month, you have an opportunity, just like all of the people from the public who chose to sign up and speak today, to tell us some of the things that are being talked about in the community that the board either chooses not to or does not hear on a daily basis. So, you're in a position where you can be the voice of your peers. You can tell us some of the things that we need to know. Um, you've also, you've already shared some areas that are in need of improvement, um, as far as the participation in extracurricular activities. But can you share something else with us that you think that we should be looking at, addressing? Or on the flip side, something that you think is doing well?
I think that one thing that is being done well is, um, the staff seems to really care about, uh, the three E's and the places that these children are being put in after high school. Uh, the three E's, if you don't know, are, um, getting enrolled, enlisted, or, um, in, sorry.
Employed.
Yeah, employment. Um, and, um, the counselors make sure to meet with all of the seniors. Right now, the counseling office is closed to meet with all of the seniors to decide which one they want to be in. And I think that they do a very good job in making sure that that is the right fit for the student. Um, one other thing that I think has been a, a little bit of a struggle in the district is I think that the stress level of the staff has been pretty, um, high, and a lot of the staff seems very overwhelmed with the amount of students in their classes. But I'm aware that it's kind of a difficult solution with, when the levy is not passed.
Um, some of our teachers at the, at Brown, they seem very overwhelmed and stressed with how many kids are in the classes, because I know some teachers, they, they just can't deal with it all, because there's some kids in our classes that don't listen, they don't follow directions, they don't do what they're supposed to in class, and that makes the teachers very stressed out. And our classes are also longer this year, so they have to deal with that longer. They have to make longer lesson plans. They gotta fix everything that they've already done to adjust to that time and the stress that they have to deal with.
Okay. So, this is the last question for me, and then we'll open it up to the board. Um, Addison, you're a senior this year. Um, just looking back, if there was something that someone could've shared with you when you were in middle school to help make the transition to high school easier or more successful, more enjoyable, um, what is it that you would share with Charlie that would kind of help her through?
I think that this is definitely something that applies more to me than to everybody, but, um, I think that if somebody had told me that, like, you don't have to be perfect on everything, it definitely would've been helpful for high school, because the quizzes in every class is obviously a lot more difficult, and, um, if you feel the need to be perfect at all, all of the time, then it causes you more stress and to do worse on basically everything. So, I would say, you don't have to be perfect.
Thank you so much. So, now, we'll open it up to the rest of the board. Any questions or comments or anything you want to talk to the student board members about?
I just wondered about future plans. Addison, uh, are you planning on going to college, which I'm sure you are? And, uh, where are you planning to go?
Um, I'm planning on going to Kent State after high school for four years, and then after that, um, I plan on going to dental school and then becoming an orthodontist in the future.
And Brown middle school student, do you have any plans yet? Are you still just trying to figure it out?
Um, well, I would like to follow my mom in her footsteps in the medical field and go to the same college that she went to. Uh, she went to Youngstown State. She is a Penguin. Um, so, she, I would like to follow in that, her, that field, but I don't know what I wanna pursue yet.
Thank you, Charlie.
Ladies, uh, you're asked by your administrator or teachers, whoever nominated you, to serve on the board, kind of an honorary position, one, one time, and that's tonight. What do you think about the board and the audience interaction? Is it what you expected? Tell us a little bit about what this has meant to you tonight, I guess.
I've been to a couple board meetings before, so I kind of expected the interaction. I do, uh, think that I expected, um, there to be more of an explanation of what was being voted on, but I know that, that they all know from the previous meetings. But especially when I was younger, it kind of seems like the board meetings are a lot of yes, 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 yes.
Um, I expected there to be more people here and, um, but the participation amongst everybody that was here is amazing, so.
You think so? Thank you. Thank you. And, and we know that, uh, the business part of the meeting is very yes, 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 because we've all had the agenda and we've all asked questions previously. And we still have the opportunity to ask questions if we're not satisfied with how we are going to approach that. So, um, we understand what you're saying, and, and we too appreciate the constructive criticism, just like we heard tonight. It's very important. And, uh, I'm sure there'll be some, uh, return conversations on that. Okay? But thanks for coming tonight, uh, and I think there might be some other questions they wanna ask. I'd like to ask you questions that maybe, uh, you don't care to answer, but I still am always interested in what, what interests you. I know that you're talking about going to school later, to college. Not every student is. In, in our last speaker talk, or not our last speaker, but next to last speaker, talked about the fact that, uh, some kids are graduating, aren't ready for anything. And is that all our fault, or is that a little bit of their fault too? Because they didn't pay attention. And I think what I'd really like to know is, what do you think the biggest problem is in schools today for kids to pay attention and, and, and get something out of every class?
So, that's huge. Um, I'm curious to see, first off, if you will answer that and how you digest that. That's a big question for student board members.
Um, I think that it's definitely a mix of both, because, um, I think that the students are def, definitely have resources available in order to push themselves to be ready. In fact, um, starting in middle school, you can take college classes, so, I mean, they're at the college. But I also understand that that is not available to everybody, because if they fail the class, then they have to pay for it, and not everyone can do that. But I do think that there is pretty good resources for everybody, and even the people that are struggling, I think that there is pretty good programs to help them get to where they need to be. Um, there's a lot of aids that will help you. There's after-school tutoring and, like, fundamental algebra splits it into two years. I think that there's a lot of things that have made it easier for people, but it's for a reason and because they need it, and not just because we're making them lazy.
What do you think, Charlie?
Um, I also feel that it's both, because I feel like kids could be pushing themselves more and giving a hundred and ten instead of, like, what they give now. But I also feel that, um, people amongst, like, teachers and everybody could, like, also, uh, give a little more, like, people can put, like, resources and stuff out there that they can make, like, like, slide shows and stuff and, like, give that out as, like, homework for everybody to review. Because, like, in the, I know some of my classes, they don't give homework at all. But I know some people also don't have the time to do it, because they're busy, they have stuff after school, but I do feel like kids could be giving more.
Thank you. Do, uh, my last question, and I'm sure there's more. Do you both have a safe way home tonight? Okay.
Does anybody else have anything for them?
If you don't give them homework, what are you gonna do to get to college?
So, now, we'll move on to the informational items, um, just a few of them. There will be a finance committee meeting Wednesday, October twenty-fifth at three at the Board of Education office. Um, Staff Professional Development Day is on Tuesday, November the seventh. There will be no school. Thanksgiving break will be November twenty-third through twenty-fourth. Conference Day, no school will be held on November twenty-seventh. The next Board of Education, uh, meeting will be December fourth at five-thirty here at the high school in the auditorium. Um, we do not have need for executive session tonight, um, so if we could have a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Tantumonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.